I'd like to call the Dover Select Board Meeting to order on Tuesday, April first, 2025 at 6:30 PM. First order is public comments.
I don't see anyone here from the church, but there was some communication about the.
The walkway?
The walkway.
Yeah, and I went out and looked at it this morning.
Yeah.
It is kind of messed up. What happened? You know?
I think, I think between the asphalt being a little bit thin and not having any shoulder here, you know?
Yeah.
It built up the sidewalk and they never, I guess I could over, we could over, they could over. Had some blown, but right up to the sidewalk.
So didn't crack the way?
Yeah, because you're driving right on that ridge on that edge all the time and uh. I think it happened with the pickup because he did with the pickup a couple of times. So I told him to not go to the pickup and just use the Ventrac machine a little. It was small.
The trail machine?
We did it, we did, you know, that's the walkway size. So we did that. Been in touch with them and we'll work on figuring something out.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Joe, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Joe's driving, so he would probably be in and out of there. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Let's move over to the assessor. Linda?
Hey, everyone.
I think they are coming up the stairs right at this moment, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Someone has.
Yeah, Dan's coming in the room right now.
Oh, okay. I'll wait.
Just see if he's there. You're here. Okay, Linda?
What'd he do? Okay, so this is about uh considering an applicant. So this conversation will definitely be a conflict of interest.
For, for, for me?
For Sarah. Yeah.
All right. Sarah is leaving the room then.
Thank you. Nothing. Are we all good?
Yes.
Okay. So I am met with two applicants, both very qualified, overqualified. But I am recommending to you all to hire for fifteen hours per week at twenty dollars an hour. Zebulon William Shippey.
Um, did you check any references?
I did. Glowing. Very, he, he was laid off and. But if ever this particular position came up again, he said he would absolutely hire him back in a heartbeat. So had nothing, nothing negative whatsoever. I wa- I went with one because the others were uh quite some time ago and. I went with the most recent.
What does that actually mean, Linda? Most recent?
Um, his, his most recent employment.
Oh, okay. Again, on the references. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and when do you want you, your new employee to start?
ASAP. Whenever, I have not, I always get messed up with the, the process. So I have not spoken with him. So I would probably either. I'll probably wait until tomorrow morning. Maybe I may call him tonight, depending on how y'all vote. So what's today? Tomorrow's Wednesday. Probably Monday.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Any questions from the board?
This is a process question, so, so I understand. So we, we will vote to approve her hiring. Is that the?
We will vote to hire.
Hire, okay. Thank you.
And I, I do want to say thank you again to Patrick, who was very helpful in not telling me what to do, but how to figure it out myself.
Any comments from the public?
Dan?
Any special requirements that this person has at your heart?
Um, special requirements that he has?
Experiences?
Um, I think one, one thing, obviously, knowledge of the town is always helpful. Just appeared to be extremely organized. They both were. It, it, and I. Uh, I, I can't really say what prompted my final decision to make this recommendation. It was just uh. I don't know what to say. I mean, they were both very, either of them could easily do. I, I guess it was kind of my gut instinct. If that answers.
Good with that, Dan?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I, I will move that we hire Zeb- Zebulon shipping um to uh work uh fifteen hours a week at a starting rate of twenty dollars per hour as an assessor's office assistant reporting to Linda Sherman.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Sarah comes back, we will continue. Okay. Next, we're going to move to the Water Task Force. Consider approval of the contract with Dufrane Group for the water feasibility study. And so I'm going to turn it over to Patrick.
Okay. Uh, members of the select board received with the meeting package a copy of the agreement with the, with Dufrane Group. This included comments from some members of the select board as well as comments from our attorney. These were provided to Dufrane and our attorney approved the final markup. They basi- we basically reached and agreed or our attorney agreed that the comments were working out, if you will. So this was, this was acceptable to our attorney and was acceptable to Dufrane in the form of contract that's provided. As all of the edits as requested, I went through and checked all of them. So they're all there. So the document is presented for consideration tonight, reflects the result of that process.
Is there a discussion?
Yay.
Is that, is that a copy of it, Jana?
It is, I mean, it's, it is, but this is the mark definitely.
So, does it have signature lines for five or just for one?
Hold on.
There's a signature page with, there's a signature page on the amendment to owner engineer agreement.
Looks like it's signature of, for one, I mean, on the agreement? All right. So we authorize one to sign it or are you just?
I, I'll sign it, but if, if you, we vote to sign it.
Yeah.
Um, but I need a copy of it. So, because I didn't want to, it was, it was very large. I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. This, let's wait.
Okay.
Yes, it appears to be this, you know, this is an earlier version of it. It's slightly different. Um, I can, I can, sure.
Sure. Um, let's uh, let's do that. You, you send it over or you can, you can print it, so. I thought you had two.
It's a ver- it's a version problem. So should we, we move to authorize the signature? I can work on this.
Yes. So Sarah?
I make a motion that we approve the finalized contract with Dufrane Group for the water feasibility. I, I, excuse me. Um, I move to uh. Direct the select board chair to sign the contract with Dufrane Group for the water feasibility study.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, put Joe on that one. Okay, thank you. And we'll come back to the signing. Next, we're going to move over to highway. Consider tractor and dump trailer purchase. So everybody should have this information on, in front of them. And Travis is recommending the twenty thousand dollar dump trailer. And the sixty, is it sixty-nine?
Sixty, the nineteen ninety-five?
Mm-hmm. For sixty-nine thousand tractor. And you've looked at it with?
Looked at it with our truck mechanic doing over all these units. Um, they're, they're very nice.
Okay. Dan?
I have a question on the bonus.
Okay, well, we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
Um, so this was a little confusing today because the warrants had the, the bill, literally the bills for those two items. And I, I'm like, but wait, we haven't approved it. So I didn't sign the warrants today. Um, I will, assuming that they are approved by the board, I will sign them as well, but it, it was very confusing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because, and in fact, the title for the, the trailer was there.
Yeah.
And I was like, whoa, what just happened? And, and could you, could you explain why they're in this cycle?
I can. Um, I think this is a excellent deal that I settled into for the town and I. I didn't want to miss out. These guys are holding this, holding these units for us. The trailer was never even listed for sale. This was something I commented up. And the tractors or the trucks, he has three of them. He asked me again today if he thought that things were going to go because I, I think the other two that were there are already gone. Like, these are well sought after, well taken care of, well maintained. I think, and I didn't want to miss out, so, you know, that's, I apologize and that is.
So next time, just give us a hint.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it was kind of like, wait, what's going on here? So, um, but I understand. You found a good deal and you don't want to let it go.
Really did that.
And, and you did save a substantial amount.
Yeah.
Under what we had planned.
We budgeted a hundred and fifty and collectively we will only spend eighty-nine, so sixty-one thousand dollars under me.
And I know you checked with Marco and there is enough money in the capital.
Yeah, yeah.
Equipment fund. Okay.
They really are very nice.
Good. Sarah?
So two questions. Um, the, the trailer prices are so different. Is there a reason?
I. In my mind, if that, I think if that guy listed it, it would sell for done.
Okay.
Thirty-four to forty.
Gotcha, there. Be a lot.
Yes. I, I think he just, like I said, I, I commented it and that is hell. He, he gave me a number and I countered it and that's what we agreed on. Both of these I have topped down on twice.
And then my other question was the, um, because we're buying a nineteen ninety-five, is that going to do anything in terms of the replacement cycle? Like, are we going to need to think about replacing that a little earlier than we would something else or?
No. This unit has been fully rebuilt.
Okay. I'm not a truck person.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Bobby, can I ask where we have them?
The truck, just care.
Yeah, yeah. It's on my, hope I have stuffs. Hope I, maybe a little chloride.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're out of happy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, not these. They're just in a different direction than selling.
And you, dude.
It's funny, on the standard, you're going to use this to get salt.
Didn't grab salt if needed. I don't want to have people, I don't want guys and equipment out of town or winter like that, you know? Um, if, if there was a salt shortage like this past spring when they called and it was two, three weeks before anybody had showed up, then I could just say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to send the trailer over and get load and bring it back.
Yes, Joe.
Is it different licensing to take that out of state to get that insured?
No, just the Class A. Just the Class A.
So you know the I C C stuff?
No, and even if so, a lot of the, the town is exempt from because it's a municipality government.
Then how many Class A licenses do we have?
Three. Um.
You being one of them?
No, but.
No?
I'm going to be.
Okay.
That way I, that way being a, a, a trainer, I can then train up to my class of my license. So that's, that's an added bonus.
Yes. Other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize Travis to purchase the nineteen ninety-five Peterbilt three seven nine X D X H, X D H D uh tractor and the two thousand Mack thirty-four foot dump trailer um for a total of eighty-nine thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good job, Joe. All right, now we're going to talk about the roadside mower.
Prices were all over the place. Um, somewhat. The Kubota definitely increased since I got the budget number. Um. But I got a quote from Kubota to New Orleans and the John Deere mower. Um, I recommend that we go with the John Deere from Spring, from Springville, Moth and United Ag and turf. Um, it is the cheapest, but it is just a newer version of what we have and what we have has served us well. The, the price is hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents and that puts us twenty-eight thousand dollars under the two hundred thousand that we get budgeted. And this is just to get our name on it. No money is needed until it comes, it's due come June. About the time we'll need it, so uh. Work out. This will just get reserved for us.
Sarah? Sarah, are we trading in the old?
No, I'm going to sell that outright.
Dan?
What's the difference between an Alamo mower and a diamond mower?
So there's, it's, it's just a brand name.
Okay.
Is what it is. There's, there's, there's three or four different ones out there. There's one that's not listed here. There's a Tiger mower. They're, they're all animal with a real mower. They're all the same type mowers, just a different brand.
Got you.
Yep.
What kind of warranty comes with this?
So this has a five-year warranty, five years, three thousand hours with, with all the machines here that were quoted.
Any other comments or questions? Bob?
Just curious, how much was the Kubota?
Two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Okay. When I, when I bid him out, it was forty thousand higher than John Deere. I was just curious.
And it was just about that.
Like that price. I did the budget quote and in October, it was, it was right in the ballpark with these others, you know, one eighty-nine, one ninety-four. But, I mean, I had him refresh his numbers and give me a good number and that's what came back.
I like Deere, it's sort of a follow-up design.
Yeah.
You didn't have to hit everything that came, but it was a lot extra money. Yeah.
Wow.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. I make a motion that we authorize Travis to purchase the John Deere sixty-one oh five E with diamond mower at one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and forty cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for saving us money. All right, we're going to move over to economic development. We have a Living History Association event request. Uh, for a, it's kind of hard for me to figure out exactly, it's, it's pretty much a dinner and. Presentation um at Dover Town Hall.
So.
Uh, well, do we have a conflict of interest because you're on the board?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Hold on, one second.
Yes.
So are you going to, you're not going to comment on this?
The only comment I'll make is the trustees haven't approved this and we don't have to pay, they didn't stay in there.
Okay, all right. Sorry.
No, no worries. Uh, I just wanted to put a couple of things out there. I spoke to Jim and said, hey, can you come and answer questions with the board about the event? And he was unable to come. Um, he did say that. After discussion this past weekend, many of the pieces of what he gave you have changed. Additionally, I had expressed to him that this wouldn't fall under events because it's, you know, if, if they went with the date that he had provided, we're obviously well within the six months of the event. Um, and he said, no, I just want to ask for the money. I just use the event program to lay everything out. So it's not technically. An event sponsorship grant. Uh, it's a request uh to the select board for the funding using the event sponsorship program.
Templates. So my biggest issue, as I've already expressed to Eric, is Jim owes us kiosks that were supposed to be made with, with Dover school kids that is, and they, they did their work. He's got the kiosks, they're in a shed and they have yet to be installed. I can't personally. Give him more money for another event, which obviously is another moving target. When he owes us kiosks and have we paid him for that?
Yeah, but not in full, but we've given him uh to date eleven hundred dollars.
That doesn't fly well with me. I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'm, so I'm really. So do we?
Table.
Vote to deny. Do we table or vote to deny?
We can't do anything until we have the kiosks in my mind. I mean, this has been years and they are in, as far as I know, in his shed in Reedsboro. And uh, I'd like to get those installed.
Pieces of the grocery street.
So could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That we vote to deny and then it can come back again once these issues are resolved instead of having it just continue and hang on our, our agenda over and over again?
Uh, yeah, we should, we should say that, you know, basically we're denying and the reasons why we're denying too.
So the motion has to be made me affirmative and then voted.
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion that we uh fund the LHA Vermont two fifty event at the Dover Town Hall.
I'll second that.
Did you say that?
It's like a regular board number now. And then we just have to vote to deny.
So now, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
I'm not saying.
And Joe, you were a nay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Loud and clear.
I think we were talking, okay. Now we're going to move into the point of liquor control.
I make a motion that we go into the board of liquor control.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the second class license for Tony's Pizza. I have reached out to Mike and he said during which is.
Second. Any other discussion?
Is there anything missing?
Um, yeah, we, they have not, we knew there's seminar.
So I make a motion that we approve the second class license for Tony's Pizza, subject to receipt by the Assistant Town Clerk of all the retired documents and payments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to come out, I make a motion to come out of the board of liquor control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, we need to approve the minutes of March eighteenth. Yes.
Yep. Uh, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March eighteen.
Right. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion, we approve the warrants of March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five for two hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. We need the same.
I think you said thirty-four and not forty-four.
Two fourteen, three four, four point eight six.
Correct. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That'll encompass the new.
The new tra- tractor and the.
And trailer.
Right. But we're not paying anything right now for the mower. All right, FYI, we have site visit at the Dover Town Common Well Project tomorrow morning, ten AM. I am going to, I plan to attend.
I don't think I can do that.
Um, it's, we're meeting at the librarian. Are we going to walk, are we going to walk down to the well?
Uh, possibly.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I mean, they're going to.
Be prepared. Yeah.
Don't wear your good shoes.
Is the well down by the cemetery or is it?
No, it's halfway down Bartlett's Hill.
Okay.
Uh, net board of abatement hearing, April eighth, six PM. I guess we're tight on the members of. So please, please attend if you can and because we don't want, we have three items to honor agenda from what I understand. We have the Wire Task Force meeting next week, April ninth, at five PM. We have the RB hearing, April tenth. Boy, there's a lot of meetings at seven PM. Planning Commission meeting, April fourteenth, at six thirty PM. And the River Valley's unions, school district meeting, annual meeting, April twenty-ninth in Warrensboro.
And the pre-annual meeting is the twenty-second.
Pre-River Valleys.
Right. At a pre-town, but it'll be in Dover.
And do you know what time?
Um, I believe we were talking actually about running it for six because we have a contested race and then we're going to be candidate villain. According to the start and then there wouldn't be two separate events. It would just start with that.
Okay. All right. Um, liaison reports?
I, I just have one. It's not really a formal liaison, but I should mention it before. We're talking about the Water Task Force. Um, so at the Water Task Force meeting next week, we will bring in Dufrane Group and the kickoff meeting. Uh, we'll also discuss, we had Adam, um, Adam Rennell at BDCC introduced uh members of the Water Task Force to New England, the New England Water Infrastructure Network, uh, which is a group that provides technical, managerial and financial uh consulting assistance to people looking at projects like the water system. So we will uh, uh, Randy, Randy Capitani and I um have both spoken with them informally. We have a sense of what they have proposed that they might be able to help us with and we understand that those services would be at no cost to the town. So we'll, we'll put it in the hands of the Water Task Force to kind of run down exactly what still the services might be, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone here was aware of it. That we will be talking to them about this.
Yes. Are we doing it at the firehouse or are we doing it in a larger venue?
Next, we have the firehouse, I think. Yeah.
Great. Well, that sounds like a good potential resource.
That's it.
I don't know that we need executive. I don't know that we need executive session. And so, getting that, we're gonna adjourn at seven PM.